We put city council meeting to order from Monday, December 7th, 2020, 6:30 PM. This is a remote meeting. All members of the city council are present via remote access. Others present in the meeting from the city are our city manager, who is in the city council room, along with city clerk treasurer, James Johnson, our police chief, Travis Bingham, and fire chief, John Harlemont, are also present in the city council room. Jessica Booth, our recreation director, is with us remotely. And Eric Vogel, our zoning administrator, is also joining us this evening. And I also see Rebecca Tarian from the city, joining us this evening. Others on the call are members of the public and the press. And with that, I'll move to item number two, which is to approve the minutes of November And I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, this is Kevin Charbonneau. I'll make that motion to approve the minute.
Motion made by Mr. Charbonneau. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Wilson.
Seceded by Mr. Wilson. Discussion on the minutes. Then hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it, the motion carries, the minutes are approved. Moving on to item number three will be comments by members of the public. With no comments by members of the public, we will move on. Item number four is the annual VAS North Country Mountaineers Snowmobile Club Memorandum of Understanding. And we have Steve Dowby with us this evening. This is something, I believe this is the third year or fourth year of this. And, um, third year. And from my understanding, we have had no issues with this. This is to open up access to come down Park, not Park Street, Broadview, Broadview, to the East Side Restaurant for snowmobile traffic. And I believe what's changing this year is you don't wish to have access through Pomelo Park?
Yeah, Pomelo Park, are you talking like where Waterfront Plaza is?
You want, you wish to still go to Waterfront Plaza?
Yeah, we want to access all those businesses there, yes.
Are there questions from, uh, actually, I'll give you a chance to speak, Steve. Did you have anything you'd like to add or comments or about how well it's run or?
As far as I know, we did not get any, have any issues. We had no calls from residents or anything about, at least that came to me. I think everything went fairly well, think people were fairly respectable. Uh, I can't think of any issues that were had, so if there is any, this is the time to say something.
Okay. Laura, does Travis have anything as far as issues that he knows of?
Can you hear me okay? Can people mute their phones? I hear a lot of reverberation.
Yes, if you're, if you're not speaking, please mute your microphone. It just helps to cut down on some of the background noises.
I'm not sure if you heard me, but Chief Bingham has no issues regarding the snowmobile.
Okay. Council members, do you have questions that you would like to ask or comments?
This is Melissa. So it's just going to waterfront, it's not going across the bridge by the railroad any longer to downtown?
Not for this. We are not asking for that for this evening.
Other questions from council members? Then if there are none, I would entertain a motion that we enter into the memorandum of understanding.
Dan Ross, I would make that motion.
Motion made by Dan Ross. Is there a second?
Kevin Charbonneau, all second.
Seceded by Mr. Charbonneau. Discussion on the motion. Then hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Now, all you need is snow this year.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Have a great evening.
You too. Thank you. Okay. The next item on the agenda is the fire department and recreation budget review. And Laura, I'm assuming the fire department will be first?
Yeah, I've got John right here. And you're gonna be able-
I'm gonna share my screen so that it comes up and it'll also be recorded in the video that's also put on NIK TV, so that way they can follow along. So just give me, bear with me just one second.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members and members of the public that have joined us this evening. As you know, I took over the department back in January and I'm trying to inject this budget into a, a much more proactive budget from where it's been in the past. If you look at, you know, top section there, our, our income stream is pretty constant with our income from carpentry and what little we make from billing insurance companies that they're actually willing to pay. So that's a fairly flat number that stays constant. As far as the expenditures, I've kept it down below 1%. And there's really only two line items that you see that have any kind of increase of any, any sizable amount. The first one is in the communications budget. As you know, we applied for a grant from the USDA facilities grant program and we were denied that. So what I did was, in order to maintain our communications capabilities and improve our radio communications, is I bumped that up a little bit so that I will be able to, over a period of time, get a, a consistent upgrading of our equipment so that we're not slammed with a, a big bill at any one time. And the, the other item that's in there is, when you get down into my equipment budget, you notice there's some fairly large expenditures down there and compared to the way they were budgeted before. And I'm trying to move in a direction where I become a very proactive in my budgeting versus reactive in my budgeting. I think that with my experience in heavy equipment and truck driving over the years, I can get it to the point where we're spending money on, on maintenance and regular stuff as opposed to reacting to breakdowns due to lack of maintenance. One of the things that big equipment suffers from is extended periods of not use. So I've come up with a, a schedule of regular use of, of our equipment, especially if we go through any periods of downtime, so that we don't have that wear and tear from, from sitting, from sitting idle. So my, my total increase is, I think, about $1,600 over the entire budget. And that's about it in a nutshell.
Okay, I have a question.
Yes.
On the insurance company, is there any way we have them, try to make them reimburse us, so, you know, so we get what we really should be reimbursed for?
It's a very challenging thing. I've spoken with chiefs all around the state. There are some that will, if there's a, any kind of substantial hazmat involvement, they'll gladly pay whatever we bill them. But as far as the regular vendor, vendor type stuff, they consider it a part of the municipality's responsibility to provide that service. And most of them will not reimburse.
Okay, thank you. Questions from council members on the fire chief's budget?
This is Melissa. I just wanted to comment that I'm encouraged to see a proactive budget with a lot of concentration on preventative maintenance. I come from a long line of mechanics and it's something that was always, you know, told to me all the time in practice. And I think it's really a good move to be moving in that direction to keep up with things and, and keep things, you know, preventative maintenance, making, making sure things don't happen rather than, as you said, reacting to major things. So I appreciate that move in the budget.
It's something that I, I discovered-
I hope the mayor's speaking to you.
Oh, the mayor, yes. Okay. Yeah, that's something I noticed when I, when I assumed the role that, again, with my background in, in heavy equipment and trucking, you know, there's a saying, a quart of oil in a tub of grease is worth a fortune in, in not having to have breakdowns. And it's something that, you know, some of it I can do in-house and some of it will be, be just regular scheduled maintenance. But the biggest thing that I, I've come across is the lack of use. Anytime you allow equipment to sit for an extended period of time, rust is created and then when you use it, it, it wears quicker. So I've, I've come up with a program where we're exercising the equipment on a regular basis. Even though we have an uptick in calls, they're short duration. And with the new technology that's in the motors today, with all the environmental stuff that's on there, they need to be run so they can get up the temperature and have an opportunity to go through their, their regeneration cycle. So we've set it up where at least once a month on our, on our meeting night, the two trucks that have the emission stuff will go for, you know, an extended run down the interstate and back, just so that we know that they're, they're getting up to temperature and they're being run for a period of time. We ran into a situation where with one of the trucks, we almost had to replace the whole system and that was gonna be about a $2,500 expense, but we were, we were able to clean it. And within communicating with the mechanic at the time, he said, if you take them out and stretch their legs once in a while, we can avoid this going forward. So we put those plans in place and it's been going on for about four or five months now.
Other questions from council members? Nope? Okay. Questions from anyone in the, in the meeting this evening? Well, thank you, thank you, chief.
Much obliged.
And we'll move on. The next budget that we will be reviewing will be the recreation budget. And Jess Booth is with us this evening.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, can, can you hear me all right?
Yes, I can.
Okay. Well, I wish that my budget was as cut and dry as, as John's, but I can definitely say as the head of the department that was probably impacted the most by COVID, it's certainly been an interesting year. It was a little bit unsettling putting together this budget, knowing that possibly our best guests could go, you know, out the window. They could either go north or south at the hands of the pandemic. So we worked with Laura and Becky, kind of worked through the numbers and tried to put together something that was conservative, on the conservative side, but at the same time, sort of hoping that we're at the end of this challenge and that by next year, our travel and, and our recreation numbers will be back up. Some facilities were definitely impacted more than others and we'll kind of see that as we roll through here. So I think what I'd like to do is just kind of go through this line by line and touch on the things that are the biggest change from our standard numbers and kind of walk you guys through that. If at any point you, you, Mr. Mayor, any of the council members have questions about a certain line, don't be afraid to stop me. So I'll just kind of hit on the things that I think are the most relevant. So, can kind of see your screen, it's a little tiny on my side, but one of the first things that you're, we're looking at here, this is the revenue section here, Proudie Beach is the first section, and we've reduced admissions. This is, admissions are usually where we code revenue, where if somebody comes and they want to just have a day pass to the beach, that's where we put that revenue. And you'll see that the actuals back in 1819 and 1920 were in the thousands, and that's because we used to code our pavilion rentals there too. At this point, it's just day pass admission. And I looked at the numbers for this year, so far, we've only brought in about $200 in that line. And with the path going through there, I think it's gonna be pretty much impossible for us to be collecting people at the gate for day passes. So instead, we're deciding to put in donations along the beach there to see if we can generate some revenue that way. But at this point, we've put it at zero just because we don't know what type of revenue that will bring in. So, there's that. The transients at Proudie Beach have gone up a little bit. We have a higher price on our prime sites and then the, the new waterfront beach sites are a little bit more than what we usually collect on our normal sites. So we expect to see an increase there. It's probably gonna be more than 7%, but we're just trying to be conservative here. You will see a reduction in the Proudie Beach athletic field rentals, and that's because we don't have the Little League there that once lived there. We still have tennis and Falcons football, but we did reduce that field usage by a little bit. And reduction in the kayaks and bikes, although I think that we probably will end up with more of those as the path, you know, starts to get more traffic and people know that that amenity is there. But for now, we've just looked at the actuals from 1920 and adjusted that number. So down into rec programs and events, you'll see a decrease in the senior center rental. We had a homeschool group that was using that facility or that venue pretty heavily, but they've grown in size to be using the gym instead. So you'll see down on line 29, the gym rental has gone up because the, that money that the homeschool group was spending is now in the gym. We added $4,000 for the parade policy that was adopted, and that's where that lives in the budgets, in the rec department section. So whenever we do have a parade, if Public Works or Police have to code their time, it will go to this line or it'll go out of, the revenue will be pulled on the other side or the expenditures will be pulled out of the expense side, but here's where the revenue Let's see. Adult programs, we have increased that based on the actuals, and this is basketball league and pickleball that we usually have in the gym. And then this next one, youth summer programs, we're gonna see a big decrease here. So usually, we bring in about $30,000 for our summer programs. And that's largely attributed to our summer day camp that we have there. So that's an eight-week-long, 7:45 to 5:00 PM program that lives over at Proudie Beach. We are actually gonna restructure that this upcoming summer because what we've seen over the last couple of years is a decline in the enrollment for that program. And we've seen an increase in the enrollment that we have for what we call our specialty programs. So these are shorter, one-week programs that are focused on a specific, a specific sport or skill, something that we're teaching the kids. So it can be like field hockey or track and field, things like that, we've been seeing a really big increase in. Those are just like two hours a day for a week kind of thing. So we're gonna, we're gonna take a cue from the community here and we're gonna remove and restructure so that our day camp is going away, but we are adding new specialty programs. And some of the things that we're hoping to add next year is like swim lessons. We think that that's a pretty important thing to have in our community and right now, it's pretty underserved. We've also heard from parents that archery, fishing, paddle boarding, those types of things are desired. And we are really the only ones that can serve that. You know, there's a lot of different day camp type programs, especially the school has a huge one that we are sort of competition for. So we're gonna do a little bit of restructuring next year. So that's why you'll see typically, we bring in about $25,000 worth of revenue from that day camp. You'll see on the expense side, a decrease in the amount of expenses that are attributed to that, largely in staffing and in training. So that's why that is a, is a change. That's a pretty substantial one. Same thing with winter programs, you'll see an increase in revenue. We hope to add a little type, one of our rec committee members is interested in hosting a Little Tykes basketball and coaching that program. We'd like to get archery started in the summer and then carry over to have it going in the gym in the wintertime. And we've had some interest in ice skating lessons down at the rink too, so we'd like to implement those programs too. Okay, Gardner Park revenue. We have, you'll see a big decrease on line 58 where it's a green space rental. The farmer's market is not paying a cash, it's usually about $1,400 a year. They are not paying a cash dollar amount, they're doing in-kind services. So there's a decrease in the amount of expected revenue from that. But they did help us out quite a bit with some volunteering this past summer. So that's pretty much it for Gardner Park. Down to the waterfront, now this is where, the waterfront was definitely the hardest hit this summer with the closed Canadian border and the reduction in boat traffic. It was, it was a, it was a quiet, quiet summer on the waterfront. So you'll see on line 63, the gateway utility reimbursement, we're expecting zero there because we no longer have Newport Natural renting out that facility. Our commercial slips are staying the same, that's meant for mega community time, the Northern Star. So that expected same revenue. The gateway center, so line 68, with, with Newport Natural renting that venue, we were making about $1,400 a year. And without them there, we're not exactly sure what to expect. We don't have rotary or Weight Watchers anymore since the pandemic happened. We're just kind of shooting at the hip to assume that we're gonna get a few weddings in there each summer. And we're really counting on this pandemic sort of being over with in order to make that happen. So we're crossing our fingers there. But again, it's a huge difference. You can see a 65% drop in the revenue difference there. Gas sales, that's the other one that was hit. Ordinarily, we make about $40,000 a year. Sometimes it can be up to $60,000 a year, depending on the boat traffic and the price of gasoline. But this year, to date, we've only made about $4,000 worth of gasoline and that was from July 1 until the end of the season. So we expect this number is probably gonna be a little bit lower. And then waterfront transient, we're basing that off the actuals from 1819, it's closer to 4,000 than 6,000. And a lot of that was based on the regattas that just didn't come around with the pandemic. So our hope is that things will get back up to normal and we'll end up with those regattas again, but it's just not guaranteed. All right, so that brings us to the end of the revenue. I just wanna pause right there and see if there are any questions or things in revenue that I missed. You can see that the overall bottom line is that we're down in revenue 12%, almost 13%. But is there any questions about any of those line items? No? All right, I guess I'll just keep on plugging then. Okay, so down in the expenses, you'll notice across all of our categories under the expenses that the, the salary lines have changed a little bit. This is just another ongoing effort to clean up sort of the over-tracking of, of the time and the way that we submit our time on our timesheets for, for payment. In the past, we've had timesheets broken down that our crew had to designate, you know, how many hours are you spending on a lawnmower each day? How many hours are you spending cleaning bathrooms each day? And we've just never used that type of data from this perspective. And it's kind of a pain in the ass, a pain in the butt for us to submit our timesheets and for Stacy to, you know, submit the time. So we think that this will just be a little bit cleaner, but what you'll notice is that the salary lines for admin, which includes my salary and the, the rec coordinator salary are all clumped in there. The way it used to be was a portion of my time was in admin, a portion of my time was in Gardner Park, and a portion of my time was in Proudie Beach and so on. But we've sort of collapsed those and designated a certain section for our positions where we spend most of our time. So you'll see an 82% increase here, but then in other lines, you'll see a reduction. Okay, so let's go down a little further. Not line 109, just a small reduction for the phone and internet. We took our software program out of that line item and gave it its own section. So you'll see the actuals for 1819 were really high and we've since reduced that and given it its own home. An increase in travel and miscellaneous, and that's just based on the actuals there Professional expenses are down, line 119, and that's based on the actuals there. And then you'll see line 126, that's where the software, and our software is the one that schedules at our field, it allows us to do online payments and online registrations for our programs. So that's what that cost is attributed to. Let's switch, scroll down. Nothing has changed for the senior center. Esther, the president of the Forever Young Club, believes that they will start to reopen again next spring. So we will start to see expenses there for their cook again and so on. Down in Proudie Beach, line 144 in the salaries, this is where, this is what I'm talking about. You'll see the decrease here because a lot of that's been moved up to admin. So line 144 just has the Proudie Beach supervisors' salary in it. And then line 145 is the two maintenance staffs, so these are our part-time summer seasonals that come in. And then 146 is our part-time summer seasonals that operate in the ticket booth. So we've sort of clumped all of those guys in there. We won't be having them divvy out their time with mowing and trimming and campground events and things like that. They're sort of all housed in those lines. It'll make things a lot easier to read next year. Let's see, what other big changes? You can see 157, line 157 has a 25% increase, that's $100 for equipment maintenance. And that's based on the actuals from 1920. Communications in line 160, that is up as well. We did add some money in there because we have a new wifi, a new person, a new company managing our wifi. And this is sort of a follow-up from the interactions that we had with the seasonal campers last week and really speaking to us and telling us that they really wanted to see some improvement there. So we went out and found somebody that is doing a lot of other campgrounds in the state, so they're campground-specific. So we think, we're expecting a better product, but you do see an increase there. I really think it's gonna be worth it, so. Okay. We'll go down to line 173. We again have a software program for our campground and this is based on like a 2% fee for every online transaction. We actually up-charge the customer, if somebody makes a registration online, then they get charged that 2%. So we see that in the revenue side, but this is where we pay out those invoices. Line 177, resale goods, we increased that a little bit based on the actuals from 1920. And then the last big thing is the campground events, that's up a little bit too, and that's based on the actuals. Okay, and should I stop there? And that was a big chunk of information. Anybody have any questions about Proudie Beach or admin at this point? Okay, I feel like I'm doing a lot of talking here.
Hi, this is Kevin Charbonneau.
Hey, Kevin.
I, I noticed, now, the improvements, is that different than the, like, repair and maintenance?
Yeah, so what you see on 169, repair and maintenance, that's like, so 169 is repair and maintenance. There's another line though, that is repair and maintenance supplies. So look at 155. We used to have two separate lines, one for repair and maintenance and one for repair and maintenance supplies. And we actually combined those back in 1920. So you can see in repair and maintenance supplies on 155, there's like a jump from 4,000 to 8,000. So that's where our repair and maintenance supplies are. And that's for like paint, nails, you know, things like that. And then improvements is fire rings and picnic tables. And then we have more, another line for improvements that are sort of a one-time improvements, and that lives in the cap- and that lives in the capital budget. But these improvements are things that we do every year, so we include them in the general budget. And that's picnic tables and fire rings are what those two things cover.
So, for example, like the washers and dryers would have come out of the capital?
Yeah, because those are kind of a one-time deal or, you know, they, that type of improvement changes on a year-to-year basis. Yep.
Now, have you, have you, I can't see where money is set aside for each year for improvements or replacements.
So that, those capital reserves are in the capital line. So when we get to the other section of the budget in a couple of weeks, that's where we'll go over those pieces.
Okay, well, thank you.
Good question. Any other questions? All right, we'll keep going here then. So recreation programs, you'll see on line 186, there's a big reduction here in staff salary. We cut quite a bit from that summer rec program. Like I said, it's seven forty-five to five for eight weeks. So there's a lot of staffing that goes into that. So there is a reduction there. And then what's left, that fifteen thousand is sort of our seasonal event program. So when we have Halloween and when they have the Easter egg hunts, and then also, you know, if we have coaches and things like that for those specialty programs that I was talking about, they're paid out of this line. Line 192, the expenses dropped down about half there just based on the actuals. We're just not spending a lot of money on those adult programs since we moved out the discount tickets into its own line. We're really starting to see how much we actually spend on adult programs, which is really not very much, which is great given the revenue that we were just talking about is quite a bit for adult programs. That's a very worthy investment for us. Okay, discount tickets, look at this, 205, line 205. Last year, we had budgeted fifty-five hundred for discount tickets. So these are our ski tickets to JP. People can order through the rec department, and we go through group sales and get a discounted rate there. We, we lost half the season in nineteen twenty, but look at the revenue from that, ten thousand five hundred and eighty-nine, and even we lost half the season. So for every ticket that we sell for J, we make like five bucks on that. So we had a really great season, and I was bummed at the end of last year when we, we lost the last half of it because that revenue could have been even greater. So we did bump that up, you'll see, on 205 to ten thousand. And hopefully, the ski season this year will be just as robust. Now, we've already had people emailing us and asking if we're going to do that program, so we're lucky to be doing it this year. Summer programs, we added, so this is not the summer camp that I was talking about. These are our specialty programs. Usually, we spend about three thousand on those with the addition of the new things. We are going to throw in an extra thousand dollars there to help purchase the equipment that we need to get those things started. Same thing with winter programs, there's a thousand dollars there, whereas we hadn't really run a lot of winter programs in the past. Play World is up a little bit based on the actuals. And then if you go down to line 218, that's where our summer camp lives. So there's usually about five thousand dollars worth of expenses, and that is things like markers and arts and crafts supplies, busing, field trip admission. All of those things are gone without that summer camp, so that is down to zero. Okay, let's roll into Gardner Park. Salary line again, that's reduced because me and the rec coordinator were moved up to the upper parts. You'll see 224 is our seasonal staff for Gardner Park, the maintenance staff. And then 225, GP admin staff, that's our ice rink, the people that work the concession stand and the skates and the ice rink in the wintertime. Let's go down to 223, or 233, there's a forty percent increase there on small tools and equipment, and that's based on the actuals. Line 236, GP equipment maintenance, that's up a thousand dollars because we have a tractor that's in, it's definitely operating past its intended lifespan. When we get to the other, some of the capital reserve money that we have, that we're trying to build up over these next couple of years is going to be going to the purchase of a new tractor. So we are, we definitely have some repairs to do annually on that thing to kind of keep it rolling. Communications is up a little because of the actuals there, just a standard kind of And then just go down through here and see, I think that's pretty much it for Gardner Park that stands out. Waterfront, again, salaries are reduced. We separated out the dock staff in 265, that's our seasonal dock hands. Our operating supplies on 269 are up, oh, thirty-three percent, and that's about five hundred dollars. That's based on the actuals. Gasoline on 283, we dropped that down expecting that we're going to be buying less gas because we'll probably be selling less gas unless things open back up, which is our hope, but... And then other than that, the gateway maintenance items, so line 289, we jumped that from one thousand to two thousand because we are the caretaker here again. So we're spending a little bit more time down at the gateway than we have over the past few years. And I'll say that we have a little bit of work to do to bring it back up to where it needs to be after sort of not having a close eye on it for the last five years. There's definitely some work that we've been putting in down there to bring that back up to really nice condition. So you'll see in the capital budget that we have some money set aside for flooring, our staff. Luckily, it's, the good side about it being vacant for not being able to have reservations is that we've been able to have all kinds of time to be down there and working without interrupting the parties and the reservations that we have. So we are in the process of giving the interior a complete paint job, and in the bathrooms and in the kitchen, that really made a difference. It looks so nice and clean down there. So that's the good side of not having the reservations. And then permits and inspections, 293, we had that at fifteen hundred. That was a new line last year. We had it at fifteen hundred because we thought that there was an inspection for our underground storage tank. That was an annual inspection, but it's only, it's not, it's not that amount. It's about a hundred dollars a year. So we reduced that, that saved us some. And then other than that, the last big thing is the aquatic nuisance. So one of the, one of the things that we've talked about in past council meetings is the weed problem that's down the dock, and it was really noticed this year without the hydro rake project from our boaters. So we've talked about the different ways that we can remedy that for next year, and we've looked into a few different options. Eric did quite a bit of research on this. There was a couple of different options, but the one that seemed most financially reachable was the installation of bottom barriers. And so bottom barriers are like this layer of material that you put on the floor of the lake, and they are held down by rebar. And you put them in, the beginning of the season, they stay in and sort of block the weeds and the vegetation from getting sunlight, and then you remove them at the end of the season. So on an annual basis, there's about a ten thousand dollar cost of installation and removal of those things. So that's something that we would expect on an annual basis. And then there's the actual purchase of the equipment, which you'll find over in the capital section, and that was about twenty-six thousand dollars. But they have about a ten-year lifespan. So we didn't get a lot of revenue this year from the grant through the state for aquatic invasive species, and that was partially because they're not really fond of the hydro rake process that we've been using. There's, it's, it's disputable because some people think that it's great, and other people think that it actually causes more damage than good when the weeds sort of break up and then disperse out in the lake and then potentially reseed more vegetation. So we think that this will probably be looking better for the state, and we're crossing our fingers that we'll have good luck receiving those grants to help cover some of that cost for that process. So you can see here that we were anticipating carrying over that nine thousand that we did not spend this year on the hydro rake project. We're possibly purchasing some of those barriers this year, and then there'll be about a twelve hundred dollar difference for next year to sort of get that installation taken care of.
So Jess, you're saying that the state, the state much prefers having mats put down than the hydro rake?
So that pretty much sums up the whole thing. You can see down at the bottom that overall, let me get on the rate sheet here. Overall, we've got a two percent, two percent decrease, but then if you look at the very bottom, because of that lack in revenue for the gateway and the changes in our summer program a little bit, it does throw things out of whack a little, but... Any questions about any of these lines or anything that I mentioned that you just need a little more clarification on or anything I didn't touch on?
So Jess, this is Melissa. Again, I, I think it's a good thing that you're looking at the summer programming, the camps and the specialty programs, and being responsive to what's, you know, what you're picking up is changing in the community with parents and children. And so acting on that with the budget and your programming, I think is moving in a good direction.
Thanks, I appreciate that. It's always tough to take a leap like that and make a change that's of that size. But I'll tell you, if there's one thing I've learned over the years is that recreation is a living, breathing thing, and what may have worked ten years ago doesn't always work ten years later because the community just has a different dynamic as people come and go and age, and you've got to follow the trends.
Yep, thanks.
Jess, I've got a question regarding maintenance. Do you feel you have enough budgeted? Because for years, we didn't budget enough, and you saw what happened to certain facilities. And that's been a concern of mine for the last couple of years is I would hate to see us penny pinch and not have enough to do basic painting and repairs of various buildings.
I do think that going through the capital plan exercise has really been helpful and sort of starting, there never before was sort of that maintenance schedule where we have capital reserves built up to replace sort of the bigger ticket items. So being able to do things like replace the flooring at the gateway or, you know, those types of things that are covered in the capital are really helpful. And even just forecasting ahead and saying, okay, we're going to need to do this big project in a couple of years, let's start saving up now so that we're not coming forward with a giant fifty thousand dollar project to get things going. So that piece has definitely helped. Having the funding to do it has definitely helped. And then as far as the maintenance of things, you know, this summer was, because we didn't have the normal traffic like at Gardner Park, we didn't have the field prep every day. You know, we had less tournaments and less things like that. We were able to get other things, projects done that we didn't have time to do before, you know, as far as manpower goes. At the same time, we didn't have our seasonals on, so some of our, you know, upper-level maintenance staff were spending some time on lawnmowers when their skills may have been better used elsewhere. But I think we're definitely getting on the right track, and, you know, stepping away from programming for a little while as we figured ourselves out definitely helped move us in the right direction. So that's a great question. Thanks for asking it.
Great, thank you. Other questions from council members?
Kevin Charbonneau, now, when the bike path is completed, who is going to be in charge of?
Of maintaining it?
Yeah, I mean, I imagine they'll have, you know, cutting grass on the sides of it. There might be repairs here and there.
Yeah, I think, I think that, you know, as far as grabbing the, mowing the lawns and things like that, that would fall under the duties of our seasonal maintenance staff over at Proudie that caretake for the rest of the lawn there. If there was ever something like really wrong structurally with the path that we needed Tom's, Tom's assistance with and their equipment and his expertise, then we probably would reach out to him for that type of thing. But we don't expect the bike path is going to have a lot of maintenance associated with it. In fact, we just got done working with Steve Delpy, and he's, I know he's not on the line anymore, but they've been really great with the communication about the snowmobiles crossing that, that path. We were worried about the studs potentially dinging that up, so we met with them and came up with a plan to put some rubber matting down and try to funnel the snowmobilers off the lake across the beach where we wanted them. So we're, we're hoping that that's going to work out this winter to protect that path. But other than that, I don't see a whole lot of maintenance and caretaking for that type of asset.
I, okay.
Was there something in particular you were sort of seeing?
You know, that regardless of what it is, whether it's a building, right, there's a certain amount of maintenance on. As an example, you have to fill in the, they appear every now and again. It's always maintenance. I just didn't know if there's anything budgeted for that, if we in fact had to care of it.
I think if something, if something did pop up, we'd probably pull that, you know, if something that was unforeseen popped up, we'd probably pull that out of the capital reserve funds for, you know, the things that are set aside for projects like that. If it means, you know, on occasion, something pops up and we do have to pull funds that we were hoping, we were planning to have intended for one use, but sometimes there's something else that pops up as a different priority, and we sort of readjust from there on the capital plan. But yeah.
Hopefully, we won't need to.
Other questions, sorry, Kevin, other questions from council members? Any questions from anybody who is on the remote call? Well, Jess, thank you. I didn't know if, whoops, I'm getting a lot of feedback, and I'm not sure who it's coming from. I've been trying to figure that out. That's better. So with that, I didn't know if the city manager had anything to add to their budget.
You might want to flip your pages over to the other page, the one that's got our capital expenses. Just to give folks an idea of what's coming at our next meeting, we're going through the public works budget, and we're going to be going through the landscaper budget. If you just scroll down a little more, conservation and development, health and welfare, cycling. Keep going, Mr. Mayor. You recall the personnel expenses, let's empty that of the air and put in the respective departments. The other expenses are usually things that we don't have a lot of control over. The county tax, there's a meeting tomorrow, I believe, at eight o'clock. That's a remote meeting to go over the county budget. Let's see, I just wanted to give you a brief overview. The downtown designation, we put in the same amount they'll be presenting at the next meeting. That represents thirty thousand operations and thirty thousand Walmart, which is what we've been doing for the past three years, as you see. The ambulance will also be presenting at our next budget. No surprises there. And then if you scroll down into debt service, each one of the department heads will have an opportunity to speak at the next meeting to explain their capital plan and their maintenance program for the coming year. And you'll see some of those initiatives in debt service. And then if you scroll down even more, keep going, keep going, there you go. Then we come into our actual capital expenditures, which are the big ticket items that I think Kevin Charbonneau was referring to. And the department heads will give you an overview of what they have planned to meet the five-year capital plan. We're in year one and year two of that plan. And once we're completed going through the process of our operational budget, we'll move right into the next year of our five-year capital plan. So you'll see that the two documents and the two strategies will tie together nicely. I hope it's, I hope it's going to come together in a tight way so that it makes putting these budgets together a little more reasonable and less of a surprise. And I can't emphasize enough that how the impacts of the pandemic have been a surprise to the city, and I think you'll see that reflected, as Jess mentioned, most notably in her budget. So we try to be very conservative and respectful about how these have played out in all of our budgets. So that's what I would say. I would say stay tuned for the 21st when you have public works presenting their budget, and then you'll have all of us to answer any of the big questions on, on this particular page. And I just want to remind you, all of this is posted on our website. If you go to the homepage and you scroll down to the bottom of the page, it's real time. So hopefully, we So hopefully, if you have any questions that you haven't asked in either this meeting or the last meeting and you think of them, please bring them forward to the next meeting. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. There, I was just turning my screen sharing off, getting ready for the next item on the agenda, which is Act Number 64, an act relating to the regulation of cannabis. We have Liz Vickers and Dave Templeman with us this evening. What I'm going to do is make them a presenter because I believe they have the PowerPoint that they wish to present. And so let me scroll down and. You should be able to share your PowerPoint now.
Okay, start sharing. And I apologize, folks, we're not super, oh, what, okay. Tech savvy, as you can hear while I'm talking. Okay, desktop, yes. Okay, we can do that. And let's see, if I can get the PowerPoint up. Okay, okay, you. Thank you. Can everyone hear us okay before I start? Can, can folks hear us, Mr. Mayor?
I can hear you.
Okay, so thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And you can see the presentation now?
Uh, no.
No? Okay, hmm.
There it is. Oh, that was mine. I have it right up on my screen. If there's anything I can do to help. And this is Laura.
Yeah, thank you, Laura. Invite video audio preferences. You. I have the app, maybe, Laura, can you share your screen and show the presentation? So that people don't have to wait for me to figure this out?
Oh, I can share. I have it actually on my screen, Laura. I can, I can share it if you want.
Very good. Okay.
Well, first of all, we want to say thank you for taking the time to listen to us discuss this with you tonight. My name is Liz Vickers and for those of you who don't know me, I am the owner of 137 Main Street, which is the building that has the UPS store and Inspired Yoga in it. And this is my partner, David.
Hi, I'm David Templeman. I'm a sheep farmer in Brownington, Vermont.
And we are here with you this evening to discuss Act Number 164 and potential opportunities for Newport. So we can move right along to the next slide. So what we are asking for the city council members to consider is that the voters have the option to vote either yes, to opt in on the next town meeting day, or no, to opt out of allowing retail cannabis sales in Newport City. Alternatively, if the council decides that they're not ready to put this on the ballot without a petition, we would ask that the council allow us to submit a petition with electronic signatures as a result of the public health concerns relating to the pandemic. There's also the matter of Ordinance 118 that Newport City enacted in 2018. And this ordinance was in response to the legalization of marijuana that occurred in 2017 and it prohibited the creation of medical dispensaries in Newport. It appears that the language of the new act may render this prior ordinance moot. However, there's a possibility that if the voters in the city decided to opt in to Act 164, the city council may want to consider repealing Ordinance 118. Oh, can we go to the next slide? I'm clicking like I have control. All right, so with the help of Laura and Jim, we came up with the following language for a petition. And it reads as follows, "We, the undersigned, petition the City of Newport, Vermont to allow the establishment of a licensed cannabis retail operation in a commercial district within the City of Newport, Vermont, including the designated downtown area. In accordance with S-54, Act 164, and Title VII of the VSA, redesignated to read alcoholic beverages, cannabis, and tobacco, enacted by the General Assembly of the State of Vermont during the 2020 legislative session." And next slide. And, you know, if we're looking at the future, it's important to know where we've been. So just a little bit of history about cannabis in Vermont. It was unregulated until 1915, at which point it was banned. In 2004, the state legalized medical marijuana. In 2013, cannabis was decriminalized. In 2017, Vermont legalized adult personal possession of up to an ounce. And it also allowed individuals to cultivate a limited number of plants. In 2018, Newport City enacted that ordinance I mentioned before, Ordinance 118. And just this October, S-54 passed into law as Act 164. And we can move to the next slide. So this is the summary of the act and this is right from the legislature's website. An act relating to the regulation of cannabis. This act creates the Cannabis Control Board for the purpose of regulating cannabis production and sale in Vermont. Participation in the legal cannabis market will require licensing by the board. Six types of licenses will be available: cultivator, wholesaler, product manufacturer, testing laboratory, retailer, and integrated licensee. Regulation of the medical cannabis program will move from the Department of Public Safety to the Board on March 1st of 2022. Retail sales of cannabis to the public will begin in 2022. And we can move along. But, but maybe not out. All right, so if Newport City voters do decide to opt in, Newport can choose to develop its own regulations and licensing criteria. We could even establish a local cannabis control committee to develop these policies. The city can also decide to put a cap on the number of operations, the type of operations, what is and isn't sold. There could be limits on advertising, special penalties. So there's a lot of opportunities for local regulation, in fact. And if there was a local cannabis control committee, it could include members of city government and it would be recommended that they adopt the same schedule as the state board so that they can follow along with that timeline of the licensing issuances. We've also done some research on the matter of the local option tax. Currently municipalities can opt into four categories of local option tax. One is sales, like a general sales tax. Two is alcohol. Three is rooms. And four is meals. Now, there isn't a separate category for cannabis at the moment. It would be in the general sales category. However, there's that separate category for alcohol. So if Newport City decided to get on the, in on the ground floor, you know, you have the power to influence what happens in the state legislature. This is a really fluid situation at the moment. These rules are just being created. And it would make sense to lobby for a separate category for cannabis for the local option tax. I think that's a really important thing to note. And we can move to the next slide. Additionally, there are some income opportunities for municipalities. The net local licensing fees would be paid to the municipality quarterly. So the state would send that money back to the local government. There's also the collection of local fees as recommended by the Cannabis Control Board. And they haven't determined specifically what these fees will be yet. The Board will recommend local fees that are designed to help defray the costs incurred by municipalities in which cannabis establishments are located. And again, there's that local option tax. And we can move to the next slide. And I'm gonna turn it over to David. He's gonna continue.
Hi, Kevin. So moving forward, there are these target dates and benchmarks, as we can see indicated here by bullet point. They're, they're a little bit boring. We'll just skip right to October 2022 when the retail licenses will be issued. Essentially, that's the target for opening day for stores in Vermont. Next slide, please. So the question is what's happening nationally? I think it's also what's happening internationally. Just in the last week, we've seen the HW, I'm sorry, WHO change the, I'm sorry. They removed cannabis from the list of most dangerous substances. And just on Friday, the U.S. House of Representatives passed a cannabis legalization bill. So if we look at the map, we can see that we only have one state left in the Union where total prohibition still exists. That would be Idaho. Starting in the 1990s, the early 1990s, with medical marijuana passing in California, we've seen not only medical marijuana or medical cannabis spread from coast to coast, but also recreational. You can see in the Northeast, we have neighbors who are engaging in the practices. Next slide, please. So the opportunities for Newport include job creation and diversity promotion. Specifically, the diversity promotion element of this, the way the law has been crafted, there's prioritization of minorities and small farmers and women to value from this. These are typically the demographics most hurt by prohibition. Now they're in a position to appreciate the benefits of lifting prohibition. Public-private partnerships, as detailed earlier. Newport will be well poised to compete as cannabis laws evolve nationwide. What this means would be that with our foot in the door, once nationwide establishment happens, you know, we'll be in an agile position to adjust, evolve, our foot in the door. So money generated for the city. And tourism draw. Specifically, tourists who would otherwise drive right past Newport may have an interest in coming into town, not only visiting a cannabis retail operation, but neighboring businesses as well could appreciate from the increased tourism. So in a quick market analysis, with 11% of Vermont adults consuming cannabis, we've established that roughly 3,000 cannabis consumers are in the Newport market area. If we were to yield, say, one-sixth of that market at a Newport-based retail operation, we could expect to see about half a million dollars of gross sales annually. Next page, please. So some of the local impacts. On the existing black market, under the new law, cannabis sales are controlled and monitored. Adult-only, 21 and up sales create a barrier where there isn't one now. Legal sales compete with black market sales, adding negative pressure to the criminal market. By creating a safe place for sales, we create space for disputes to be dealt with peaceably within the law. Public use and enforcement concerns. By having a regulated place of sale, the saleperson can become one more voice of caution for the clientele. Messages such as "you are not allowed to consume in public" should be clear and "don't consume and drive" will be message number one. The point of sales becomes a place where boundaries are set. The pressures to be discreet and safe no longer rest entirely on law enforcement. DUI enforcement. So this is a pretty significant concern, I'm sure. So legal recreational sales doesn't bring cannabis to Newport. It's already here. This merely brings cannabis out of the shadows. Saliva testing for THC is in development. It would hopefully be a tool law enforcement has to draw upon at traffic stops by the time retail establishments open in late 2022. Moving forward to cannabis culture. In the past, cannabis use was seen as synonymous with counterculture. However, its consumers come from a wide array of demographics and would prefer the image of cannabis to be normalized. This isn't about rock and roll, hip hop, left-right politics. Cannabis is just one more adult product like alcohol, tobacco, and has its purposes as a medicine as well. Next page, please. So some general concerns the public may be reflecting here. So proposed question, will cannabis use among youth rise if we have a store in Newport? The data actually shows that in states where recreational cannabis has been adopted, they actually see a drop in youth usage. So I find that interesting. Question number two, will crime increase? In a 2020 study by the National Crime Justice Reference Service, which examines the impacts of legalized marijuana in Washington and other states, has shown that there's been no significant change, in fact, in not just cannabis-related crime, but more serious offenses as well. And then a third important question, will legalized cannabis sales impact DUI and traffic-related incidences? In fact, there's no real clear evidence to suggest that. In fact, we've seen in California, this is probably coincidental, but an 8.3% decrease in traffic fatalities the same year that cannabis sales launched. So we can move on to the next page. So exploring possibilities, what this can mean for Newport. So this could potentially be an opportunity seized versus an opportunity missed. And what I mean to say by that is the way that this is being set up, there will likely be a limited number of retail licenses available. So as a municipality, if we choose to opt in in the coming year, we'll be in a great place to get one of those licenses. However, should we revisit this later and opt in, say, in two, three, five years from now, there may not be the opportunity to get one of these licenses for a retail operation within city limits. So not to say that this is our one and only chance, but it looks like this may actually be our chance now. So next bullet point, turning liability into an asset. What was once considered a problem that required tax dollars and authorities to deal with can now become a taxable item and activity and a monitored one. So moving to keeping culturally current in the marketplace. What this also means is, again, regarding tourism draw, keeping Newport cool and happening and being something that is dynamic and reflecting the national current. We are a smaller part of the world, but we want to show that we are current in what's happening. Next bullet point, involvement in the political process in shaping cannabis policy. By opting in, it gives Newport the ability to participate in crafting how this is going to affect policy and the Vermont people. I think that's really important because if we do have concerns, we do want to have a place in where the regulations are gonna be changed or formed. So why should we opt in? We're gonna have increased commercial traffic, income opportunities for the city. We'll be able to compete with neighboring townships as opposed to watching our potential tax dollars leave the Newport area and maybe even Orleans County. It will give safe access to our community and decrease black market activity and underage sales. I'm gonna hand this back to Liz.
And yeah, we can move on to the next slide, please. So in conclusion, what we are asking for is simply to, you know, give the folks of Newport an opportunity to decide whether or not they want to participate in this program on the next town meeting day. We believe that opting in to allow cannabis retailers to do business in Newport City is a viable strategy to increase economic activity, to support and grow small businesses in our area. And it could also be an integral step in creating a dialogue between the local community and our law enforcement. We believe that the benefits of having a cannabis or multiple cannabis retailers in the area, the benefits of that would outweigh the risks. But primarily, we believe that the people of Newport deserve the opportunity to decide that for themselves. the people of Newport deserve the opportunity to decide that for themselves. And our final slide just shows a list of the resources that we use to collect all the data that we presented. There's a lot of good information there, and I believe this slideshow is up on the website, and so people can go to the slideshow and click on those links if you're interested in, you know, reviewing some of the data, looking at the whole bill. There's a lot of good stuff out there, and we will say thank you for your time. We so appreciate it, and we'll turn it back over to the mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let me see, whoops.
And we're very open to, you know, a discussion if you choose, but no pressure.
Okay, I just had to unmute myself again. I muted myself. Thank you for the presentation. It's a new and evolving, as I know as we speak. I can tell you, as far as the taxing aspect of just cannabis, it is one of the topics up for discussion amongst all of us mayors at our mayor's meeting next week. And so, we will be discussing the local option tax, because we would like to see the legislature at least amend it so that we could just tax cannabis if we so choose. Because I know a couple of other mayors like myself are concerned that if you, if you just, they basically, the law was originally going to be where you could have a local option tax just on cannabis, but then the legislature decided, well, municipalities have a chance just to have a 6% sales tax on everything. Well, that doesn't sit well with a few people, only because they don't want to tax some of the local mom-and-pop retail stores that are struggling. And so, so that's a topic that I'd add discussion coming up. I can tell you that aspect. At this time, I would like to have the council ask questions.
Mr. Mayor, this is Kevin Charbonneau. Yeah, I pretty much found the same thing on the taxes. And chatting with Vermont League of Cities and Towns, currently, there are 17 municipalities that have chosen to do an excise tax. For example, Williston charges an additional 1%, but that is on all stores across the board. And, you know, the thing we have to look at is whether our charter can allow an excise tax, and secondly, if, even if it could, it's not something we need to put onto our local businesses already that are struggling. So, I'm happy to hear that you and the other mayors are looking at a specific tax.
And my understanding too also is, if, to do the local option tax, that also has to be approved by the voters. I know that was done in all the other municipalities. And so, it's something that we as a council just cannot implement. Any type of local option tax has to be approved by the voters. And then, back to the whole Act 164, I almost said Act 64, that's a different act, on 164. The, if the voters choose to approve a retail establishment, my understanding is per state statute, that automatically will supersede our ordinance. That's my understanding of the way the state law was written. If the voters choose not to allow retail establishments, then our ordinance will stay in effect. So, the statute just doesn't automatically supersede the ordinance. The voters actually have to approve, the way I understand it, I may be, I think I'm correct on that, the way I understand is the voters have to opt into the retail establishment.
Yeah, that's the way I understood it as well, and that was corroborated with the Vermont League of Cities and Towns. So, really, you know, if it goes before the voters and if they approve it, then ordinance 118 just becomes moot. If they decide that they don't want to allow retail sales of marijuana, then our ordinance stays, but it doesn't matter because the voters have spoken. So, really, the ordinance, it neither harms nor helps the whole discussion.
Right, right. The only other thing that I had from reading everything over the weekend and the discussion, a discussion, but research, electronic sign, if the council decides not to just put it on the ballot for town meeting, and when it comes to electronic signatures, are you going to be paying for, like DocuSign or one of those services? I happen to work in a legal office, and we get very concerned about, you know, electronic signatures. How do you actually verify that they're from the person signing the petition? You know, we could have people from all over Orleans County signing a petition for a ballot item in Newport, you know, to put it on the ballot. And so, that was my concern about electronic signatures is the verification process.
Yeah, I'm not sure we can, Mayor.
You can't verify the signatures?
Yeah, well, I mean, I could go collect electronic signatures and then go in person to individual homes. I'm trying to avoid being exposed to COVID or become a vector. So, you know, it's, we're in a little bit of a pickle here. But yeah, I'm not exactly sure how we would do it authentically via electronic means.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Wilson?
Yes. On this electronic stuff, if we can't verify they're in Newport, it goes right back to when we were presented, when the snowmobile first wanted to come to Newport, and they had all these massive signatures, of which only 25% of them were people from Newport. So, if there's no way to guarantee an electronic signature, then I'm sorry, socially distanced, you wear your mask, but you're going to have to go out and get signatures. That way, we know they're from Newport.
Is there a way that we could cross-reference, if we get signatures and people also give us their addresses, which would have to be in Newport City, would that be a way to, you know, sort of cross-reference people with the voter rolls? Is there anything in that realm that could be possible?
The thing with signatures, not signatures, but addresses? I'm sure they could be cross-referenced with the checklist, but the thing with, I could say that I live in Newport with a mailing address, but I actually live in Derby, because Newport mailing address goes all the way up to, up the east side of the lake, up to Derby, it goes all the way up to Salem View Heights, somewhere, that's way up that way. Some of those addresses are actually Newport. So, I, I think it's very difficult to verify addresses electronically. I mean, the city clerk treasurer is on, he can probably help answer some of the questions, but that was the only concern, reason why I raised electronic signatures, is because it's so hard to verify things. I mean, the council, one option to the city council is you can just opt to have it on the ballot on town meeting day. That's an option that the city council has. We can choose to have this where the voters can vote on it. Other questions from other council members or comments?
Yes, this is Melissa. I just had a few questions, just following up on the presentation a little bit. So, my first one was on the list of things about having the retail here, that it could be that salespeople or, you know, the proprietor could be mandated reporters. In my experience of mandated reporters in my line of business is with child abuse and elderly abuse. So, how, is there another type of mandated reporter, and how does selling marijuana connect to child abuse and elderly abuse? Or is there another type of mandated reporter?
No, no, I was actually considering children and people who are under other people's care. So, you know, often in the cannabis world, a purchaser will get the medicine for somebody who needs it, who's unable to arrive at a dispensary themselves. So, caregivers. So, in regard to caregivers or people who are guardians of children, should, you know, children be brought around or should any information be shared? That could potentially indicate the endangerment of children and/or people under others' care. This would be an opportunity to bring that to light. And I think the bigger point here isn't just mandated reporting. I think it's that if we get creative, we can create a system here that allows for the protections that we want to see in place that aren't now with the black market situation. And that was just one idea that actually crossed my mind. It may not be a good idea, but there are other ideas that, you know, we're open to explore.
I don't have a particular opinion one way or the other at this point, I'm just following up on some things. Okay, so thanks for that. And so, then the other one was on the opportunity, the possible opportunity for the city or town to recoup expenses that were, that are incurred by having a retail shop in a community. So, what type of expenses do you expect the city to incur, if any?
Maybe more roadwork, because we're going to get a lot more people coming to town.
Cheeky answer.
Yeah, but, but in all, in all truthfulness, I don't really know, and I believe that's a potential that the state really didn't understand but believed could exist.
Okay, all right, thanks. And then, one more here, sorry. So, reducing black sale, black market sales, so the assumption is that people, that it's going to be more reasonable, or people are not going to want to get in trouble for buying it on the black market, although, is there a penalty in the law for doing that?
Yes. Yeah, currently, there is no legal sale of marijuana in Vermont.
Okay, but there's, that's a whole nother subject. So, the theory is, is that people will move from buying it from the street corner or their buddy and moving it to a retail shop, right? Okay. So, that makes sense to me unless my buddy's selling it cheaper, but that's okay. People want to obey the law, they'll come to the store. So, my other question was about the reduced, about youth and, you know, not, children not having access and that selling, legalizing it, having it a retail shop, that it doesn't increase youth use or controlled substances, excuse me, substances and things. So, the Vermont Department of Health, they do an annual survey every year, it's always late coming out, but they do an annual survey on youth consumption and use of substances. And Newport's last report showed a huge increase in, you know, a continuing increase in substance abuse in children, obviously, school-age kids, and as early as, you know, 12-year-olds are reporting use. So, so obviously, they're getting it somewhere. And I suppose it's just like, you know, prescription drugs, you tell us, everyone tells us to, you know, lock up your prescription drug so Johnny doesn't get it. So, with this, I guess the same thing applies to the marijuana, that it's responsibility in the home, if one chooses to use, to keep it away from their children.
Right, so.
That's not a retailer's responsibility, that's a, that's a home responsibility. The retailer's not going to sell to someone underage, obviously.
No, but the retailer will be mandated to provide childproof, you know, well, this is, you know, age-specific, but childproof packaging for a said product. So, you know, for the age groups that could just, you know, accidentally come upon cannabis, that's resolved. For the older groups, say, junior high and high school, we don't know how this is going to pertain to Newport specifically yet, until it happens. We already see increases before this has even come into play. So, with those increases in mind, I would suggest that maybe the current way that this has been handled isn't good. I mean, we haven't been able to fix the problem nationwide, worldwide. So, this might be a way that we can create one more barrier. I don't profess that this is going to be the answer, obviously, but it's one more arrow in the quiver.
Okay, great. Thank you, I appreciate clarifying for me, it helps, thanks.
I just thought of a question based, kind of following up on some of Melissa's questions. Now, the retail marijuana that a person would sell in the store, it would be something that you could, like edibles, smoking, so on and so forth. Now, my question is, the stores will only be able to buy from an approved grower in Vermont, right? And the state is going to regulate the growers as far as who can have an operation to grow the marijuana? I'm sure they're going to have, I'm hoping, or I'm assuming, they're going to have regulations on the potency, because I can remember when it first got legalized in Colorado, the study that I saw, this was years ago, the first year they did it, they were having all sorts of increased visits to the emergency room, because people were buying edibles and basically ODing on the edible because of THC content, and they just kept eating and eating, not realizing, and then it hit them, and then they showed up at the ER. And so, the first year, they had a huge increase in emergency room visits. So, I'm hoping that Vermont will basically have better control over that.
It's hard when you have a bag of gummy bears to stop eating them.
Well, that's what happened, yes, I know, that's what happened in Colorado.
I believe that law says there's a limit of 30mg of THC.
Well, actually, any edible is limited to 100mg of THC per package. Organic flour material is restricted at, I believe, 30% THC levels. So, the state is taking these things into consideration and putting limits on how potent this recreational drug can be. I think that is a concern, and I've seen the limitations set, and they look reasonable. However, if the town of Newport or a commission, if the town were to form a commission, that could, that commission could add additional restrictions. Not to say that a retailer would like to operate under that constraint, but if there are concerns, those, that commission could implement further regulation for a specific Newport store or for Newport stores, plural.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions from council members? Whoop, Dan, I can see your lips moving, Dan, but I can't hear you. Did you want to call in? Oh, now you, no, I said, oh, okay. Oh, I guess he's having a technical glitch. Other questions? Laura, do you have questions or comments?
I just wanted to thank Liz and David for approaching the city with this idea. This is new and innovative. It's a very big step for the city, particularly going from passing an ordinance in 2017, or was it 2018? We knew at the time that the ordinance was passed, that there was a chance that the legislature would put this into law and that there was a chance that our ordinance would become moot as a result of it. I think that the depth and breadth of knowledge that Liz and David have brought to the subject is very helpful. I didn't know anything. Uh, I, I didn't know anything about this when they first approached us, but in our meetings, it's been very enlightening. Um, I know that there is a concern about the signatures. And, um, I just wondered about the possibility of putting this on the ballot from the select, from the city council's, um, view. And I know that was something that you might discuss this evening or to, or to try to figure out a way if that was a good idea. Um, it is legal to ask the question at this point. Um, it feels like we can come out of the shadows, if you will. And so in light of COVID, uh, these are crazy times. And, uh, when we were in the planning stages of this, both Liz and David understood that getting signatures would have some value because that would give them an opportunity to, um, educate one-on-one as they were procuring signatures. Uh, but they also have been very respectful about the fact that we are in a COVID, um, in a pandemic. And, uh, it doesn't give me a sense of comfort to send these people out to get signatures when there's another alternative. So I just wanted to plant that seed and ask for council consideration on their behalf. I certainly would not want to be responsible for, um, asking them to go be, what is the term, a super-spreader? So that's all I really have.
Okay.
Well, Paul, I got in, I think.
Oh, good, I'm glad I sent you a note to have you call in because Dan, Dan Ross joined by phone because his computer was acting up. I just wanted to make sure he had the opportunity to ask questions or, you know, ask and, and make comments. So Dan, I'm going to give you the floor.
Well, I, I thought the presentation was great. I think the rollout time that the state is giving is going to be very helpful. And when we talk about all these things and children and misuse and the, the other things, we have time to start an educational program and kick that out. So I, I think, um, for me, I really don't care one way or the other. I mean, it's an opportunity for Newport, it could be built right on our border in Derby, and we have to deal with it that way. So, you know, if we can have it in Newport, for me, it's a better thing. But I think, um, I don't think we should have to go through the petition route. I think we should do, the council should make that decision. It affects everybody in this community. And the sooner we do it, the better off we are. So number one, my thing is, is that there's got to be strong education and, uh, the opportunity for the community to jump in. And I think everybody knows the problem we had wi- with vaping. You know, vaping four years ago was nothing. You know, there was a shop in St. John's Berry that opened. I think it was the first one. And it just blossomed into this big thing and it became a problem. I don't see this doing that. So I wish everybody luck with this. So thank you for the presentation.
Thank you, Dan.
I agree about the, uh, putting it on the ballot for town meeting. I mean, I, I, uh, wouldn't want to see anyone get, take a chance on getting COVID or possibly spreading it. And especially with the pandemic, um, the way it's increased in Orleans County drastically. I know in Newport it's drastically increased. I follow the health department every day just to see what the numbers are. And so I think, um, and it does affect the entire city. And, you know, we could have the voters, you know, make their decision, um, town meeting day. So I agree with Dan regarding the, uh, the not needing signatures. But I also was going to put out there that, um, there's still time, if the council wishes to think about this for, between now and the next meeting. I mean, we do meet in two weeks. So I didn't want anyone to be pressured and feeling like they had to make a decision tonight. Um, we have, um, a meeting in two weeks also.
However, if you decide to, um, enforce the petition requirement, uh, just keep in mind that the deadline, I believe, is January 14th. So, uh, David and I have children, it's the holidays and COVID. We would be very challenged, potentially. I mean, I'm not saying it would be impossible, but it might, it would be pretty hard.
Right.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, this is Kevin Charbonneau.
Go ahead, Kevin.
I, I don't think we should vote on it tonight, uh, perhaps next council meeting. But eventually, we're going to have to put it before the voters, either this election or next election. Uh, because that's the only way that we'll know. You know, if, if somebody else comes forward or wants to, uh, retail marijuana, you know, how many people have to come forward before we decide, okay, put it on, on the ballot? And I don't think it's a good idea, uh, as everybody has said, to send people out just kind of spreading the virus, which is in full bloom up here. Uh, but it's definitely something to think about. Um, and, and maybe it could be an agenda item next meeting.
That was my plan, is if we didn't have action tonight as far as the ballot, I want, I was going to make sure it was on the next agenda for the next meeting. Um, I think it should be on this town meeting because we would be getting in, we would let the voters decide at this town meeting. And as in the presentation, we would actually be one on, on the cutting edge to help shape policy. And I think that's important. Sometimes it's better to be proactive than to be reactive. And if we could be at the table, um, helping to shape policy, um, sometimes, as we all know, policy in Montpelier gets decided by a certain county in the state, um, who seems to have a big say. And so I, I look at it this way, that if we could be at the table and have a say as far as policy, I think that's a good way to go. Just my thought on that, just my thought.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Wilson?
Yes, I, I totally agree that we need to put it on the ballot. And we have the power to go ahead and do it without, uh, signatures. But my question is, is this a, is it a binding vote? Yes or no, or is this feeling out how the public feels? Because, well, in that case, um, if it's a binding vote, um, what we did with the water tower was kind of a little, uh, we back, backtracked on what the public wanted. But on this one, is it a binding vote? Or say the public says we want it, then does the council have, we should be the one voting saying yes? Because the public wants it, we want it.
This would be a binding vote. That is what the statute, um, um, basically says that. I mean, they could get a petition right now and have it on the town meeting ballot, um, in March. And that would be a binding vote. And so what we're doing is if we just place it on the ballot, you're avoiding, um, exposing people potentially to COVID and things like that. Um, and so yes, this is a, this would be a binding vote.
I, I totally agree. I don't think that they need to be going out knocking on people's doors. So whether we do it tonight or is it Kevin requested in two weeks? Um, yeah, I have no problem with it. I just didn't know if it was a binding or a non-binding vote.
No, it would be a binding vote and, but no, my, my goal was to, if, you know, I didn't want anyone to be pressured tonight. I wanted everyone to see the presentation. Um, you might think of some questions between now and the next meeting and we can invite, uh, Liz and Dave back, um, you know, to answer maybe additional questions.
Sounds good.
That's why I, I didn't want to pressure it to be tonight because you can always think of questions, you know, after a presentation. And so next meeting is December 21st and that would be plenty of time for the council to, you know, vote to have it on town meeting.
That sounds good because as people read this in the paper from the meeting and watch it on TV, uh, who knows, they might weigh in to us anyways.
But that could just be, that's true, very true. Um, but it's good to get a, 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 um, cross-section of the entire population, you know, voting on it. And that's how I look at it. And so, okay, other questions from council members?
I don't have a question. I just, um, think it's a good idea to, um, wait till next meeting again, just in case there's questions, if anybody in the community wants to weigh in. Prior to, we want to be sure that, uh, we're not, you know, um, excluding the community and their inputs at this point. So I would suggest that we wait till next meeting. And if it, if the council does at that point choose to, you know, um, that, to go ahead and do it, to just have the council put it on the, on the agenda. Again, depending on what people find out between now and next week. Um, it's that way, you know, that's what, it's just going out to the city voters to make a decision on what they want in their community. And I think that's fine.
Other questions from council members? Okay, well, thank you for your presentation tonight. Um, you're, hopefully you're available in two weeks for our council meeting and we'll, I'll definitely have this as an agenda item. And, um, I think if council members have any questions, maybe ahead of time, if you get them between now and the next meeting, you could always email them to the city manager who could forward them to, uh, to Liz and Dave. Um, and that way they could, you know, have them before the meeting to answer if they want, if they maybe need to do some research. So if you think of questions, you could always email them to the city manager, um, ahead of time to forward. I think that's a good thing also.
We just want to say thank you again for the time this evening. And thank you, Delora, for, uh, helping us put this all together.
Yeah, thank you very much.
And you as well, Raymondette.
Yes.
Okay, you're very welcome, thank you. Okay, we will move on. The next item is the 2021 city council meeting schedule. Um, council members receive the schedule. And are there any questions on the schedule from council members? We're obligated, unless there's a holiday, to meet the first Monday of the month. And then, um, for days that there were holidays, it was moved to either the me, it was moved to the meeting either before the holiday or right after the holiday. And so, um, this is the schedule. Are there, if there, are there any questions from council members? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Wilson, I make a motion and we accept the 2021 regular city council meeting schedule.
A motion's been made, is there a second?
Oh, I'll second that.
It's been made and seconded, any discussion? Then all those in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, the ayes have it, motion carries, we have this scheduled for 2021. Moving on, uh, new business. I do not have any. Uh, Mr. Ross, do you have any?
No new business.
Mr. Charbonneau?
I have none.
Mr. Wilson?
I have no new business.
Ms. Patterson, anything new?
I don't have any new business, but I, just sort of an observation walking around. It's not the city's, you know, problem, but I would hope people could be a little tidier. There is an incredible amount of garbage on the side of the roads. So if, uh, Newport visitors could be, not throw their stuff out their windows, it would be appreciated.
Mm-hmm, I agree. Laura, do you have any new business?
I do not, thank you.
Does Mr. Johnson?
No.
Nope, okay.
It's fun.
We'll move on to old business. I don't have anything. Mr. Ross?
No old business.
Mr. Charbonneau?
No.
Ms. Patterson?
No.
Mr. Wilson?
No.
Uh, Laura?
No, thank you.
And Mr. Johnson, does he have anything?
No.
Nope.
Nope, nothing at all? Okay, good. Okay, the next regularly scheduled city council meeting will be Monday, December 21st, 2020, 6:30 PM. And it will once again be a remote meeting, um, as per the governor, who is still recommending remote meetings. Um, and with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn at 8:18 PM.
I'll make that motion.
A motion made, is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, I'll second it.
Seconded, um, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, the ayes have it, we are adjourned.